I'll call me to order, please rise with a pledge of allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
This is an open meeting of the Seward, Nebraska, government body. The city of Seward provides for the Nebraska Act of Conducting Business. They talk that the Nebraska Act means active display on the North Wall of the meeting facility as required. Disclosure of meeting recording processes posted in the meeting room. The participant signing sheet is available for use by any citizen adjacent to council. Prisoners shall approach the podium, submit name and address for the clerk's record. Interact limit remarks to five minutes. All remarks shall be made, or should be directed to the mayor, who shall determine by whom any appropriate response shall be made. The city of Seward reserves the right to adjust order of items on this agenda if necessary and may elect to take action on any of the items listed. Please call the roll.
Welcome back here.
Camper.
Here.
Coleman.
Eric.
Miller.
Here.
Singleton.
Eric.
Schmidt.
Here.
Hendricks.
President.
First item is minutes from February eighteen, twenty twenty.
Salute.
Sorry.
Motion in a second. Please register your votes. Please spread the votes. Items one through three of the consent agenda.
Move to approve.
Motion in a second and discussion. So now, please register your votes. Please spread the votes.
Welcome back, Camper Coleman, Noah, Singleton, Schmidt, Hendricks.
Confirmation of mayor appointment. We have the reappointment of Larry Goldsmith to the tree board for a three-year term.
To approve.
Okay.
Motion in a second. Please register your votes. Please spread the votes. Public hearing this evening at seven P. M. Liquor license application of City of Seward DVA Seward Community Golf Course, ten forty-sixth Country Club Drive, Seward, Nebraska. We have two, we have a resolution and application. Greg?
Yes, this is the city's application concerning our liquor license at the Seward Community Golf Course. As we noted, we wrapped up plans with part fifteen last fall. Discussed with the council what we wanted to do moving forward. It was decided upon that to best serve our customers and our membership that come out to Seward Community Golf Course is to have that liquor license now held by the city. Cody will be our manager. He's here tonight, so we'll approve his, or consider his application and recommendation as manager. We'll get that up and running, work out most of the food issues in regards to small-scale stuff, candy bars, little additives, and then work our way through this year, make sure our staffing is appropriate and how we handle that in the hours, and then reassess after this, this season's over. But really, this season will be about establishing the liquor license, making sure we have trained up staff to understand what they're doing out there, that they're trained in the appropriate manner. And then we'll get through this season and then reevaluate once the season's over come fall.
The big thing is this way, when the, if you're able to golf on the course, you should be able to also get a drink at that time. So we wanted to just make sure that we are, you know, providing a, what I would call the expected services that people would, would want as they go out, whether they're local or visiting, that they would expect to be able to, to have, have that open. So that's our hope at, at now is to be able to start with that and then see how it progresses and build from there. We recommend approval, but we also have a public hearing. So any of the public wishes a comment on this item? See no one from the public wishing to comment? We're good. Then we'll close the public comment portion of the public hearing. Any other questions or comments on one A, which is the resolution recommending approval of a Class C liquor license for City of Seward DVA Seward Community Golf Course. Yes?
Just a question. Do we need to, do we have any additional liability? Do we need additional liability protection for anything that would happen or in regard to serving the alcohol, anything like that?
Well, I would defer to Kelly, but typically, there, there is, in other states, you have what are called dram shop laws, which would have a liability on the owner if somebody were to be over served and then go have an accident and someone gets hurt. Nebraska doesn't have that type of liability. And so the liability would be the same liability you would have if somebody fell on a sidewalk or at a park and they would get hurt. It would be that, and that, and we can verify that with, with our insurance agent, but I would assume it would be covered just like it would under the building itself.
Thank you.
Any other questions? Sid, Jeff?
I was pointing to her.
Oh, okay. This is an option. You, you signal, you buy it. Anyone else?
I'll reduce the resolution.
Okay. The resolution has been introduced and is designated as resolution number twenty twenty dash twelve. Would anyone like to move that this resolution be passed and adopted?
To move.
Second.
The motion in a second. Please register your votes. Please spread the votes.
You're also required to have a manager on record with Liquor Control Commission, so one B is the application recommending Cody Harrell as manager of Class C liquor license for City of Seward DVA Seward Community Golf Course. Any questions?
Recommend approval, the application to Cody?
Second.
A motion in a second. Please register your votes. Please spread the votes.
I was worried. I was really pulling for him.
Thanks for coming, Cody.
Have a good night.
Have a good night.
Thank you all.
All right, we'll get to work on it.
All right, item one, an administrative item, supplemental letter agreement with Short, Elliott, Hendrickson Incorporated, S E H, for professional engineering services to develop a plat for the remaining unplatted portion of the Seward rail campus. Greg?
We have from S E H here Jake Vashia.
So this, for the plat is for the remainder of the rail campus, portion that we own, as well as bringing in the portion that John Heath owns in that ag business that is there. The intent is to bring this in so it's all platted, the remainder of the property that we own. We had to wait until we owned Egater and we replatted the original addition. And we're looking to final plat. I believe we discussed at the rail campus, kind of like this was the first set of lots after Pine Street. Is that correct? Good. That's still the intent. And then also bring the John Heath property into, and annex them and bring that into the plat.
Any questions? Comments?
The critical, honestly, the critical element of the plat is you will designate the name of the right of way for the entry boulevard.
Yes.
Rail campus has reviewed some potential items. We followed up and done some history on ones, so there'll be a proposal brought forth to you on that name, but that's probably a critical name. So we put a lot of time and effort into it, I think, and trying to think of different names and making sure they weren't inappropriate or found out something in somebody's deep dark history or things like that. So we'll put a proposal in there and that will be on the plat as well, and then you can consider that at that time if you want to amend. But we'll provide the information on the background on that as well.
Did Vashia Memorial Boulevard, did that not get traction?
Not, not yet.
Coming soon.
Right next to the Arby's. I'm kidding.
Another Target.
Another Target.
It says city engineer date dash date.
Right. Any other questions or comments for Jake?
I'd move we approve the letter of agreement with S E H.
With a motion in a second. Please register your votes. Please spread the votes. Item two, plans and specifications for Seward Electric and Water Advanced Metering Infrastructure Improvements as prepared by Olson and Authorization Advertisement of Ford bids. We have Greg with us.
Hello, good evening. My name is Greg Grinch with Olson out of Lincoln. And I've been working with Greg and a few of the city staff on the transition. Let's ask to give you a brief, and it was emphasize brief history on what we've been doing. The city of Seward currently has their meters, both electric and water, served by N P B D. N P B D is getting out of the co-op meter agreement, and I believe Seward is the largest entity still within that co-op. And so the meters are currently read, water meters are read through the electric meters, which is then read through an Aclara system. And so the city has been wrestling with water endpoints or the actual radios being obsolete and not able to get parts. And then with the electric system, having N P B D pull out, been looking at different options. The goal of the automatic metering infrastructure allows the city some different flexibility in how to read their meters with the challenge of do we try and match the service that we're getting now versus the service that, different services that are out there. So we did meet with several different groups. There is a plan for a transition because the water and the electric meters are operating a little bit differently. The water meters have a drive-by system now that they're utilizing to read those, so they can replace some of those endpoints that are now obsolete. And then the electric meters would be transitioned to a full A M I system. And so in, this process has started in last August. We've met with several different vendors and asked lots of questions, really become educated on the process and what they offered. And we have pulled city staff and gotten their feedback as to what they would like to include with these, with these systems. And so now we are to the point where we are putting the, the specifications out to see different price points and different alternates for installation of the system and both by the city and by a contractor. So that is what is before you today. There are lots of details in there. I will not go into those. I think the most important thing to bring before the council is that there are several bid alternates, installation being one, so we'll be bidding it as an alternate for the city to install or for a contractor to install with certain requirements for that. We are also looking at bidding out the water meter reading system separate from the electric and then an alternate to have them both be the same. We've heard pros and cons for going both ways, and so by bidding out all of these different alternatives, you will have the option to, to weigh those pros and cons and, and determine which is the best fit moving forward. The other difference between the electric and water is the goal is to have the electric meters all done within one fiscal year. We're trying to really bridge this bi-fiscal year, so by bidding it now, the city will have information to put towards their budget, maybe do some of the work, but then starting the full-scale meter replacement October first or maybe the second. The water meters, because the, I'm sorry, the water meter endpoints, because the water meters are still serviceable and still have several years or a few years left in their lifecycle, and the endpoints are really the part that's going to be replaced. The thought was to replace those over a three-year period with the first year being when the A M I infrastructure is installed and can be utilized and then endpoints are exchanged on a fiscal year basis. So that is how the current bid arrangement is, is being proposed, and we will see how those results come in. Depending on how funds become available, that could be changed, but that is how the current proposal is set up. Any questions to that point?
Any questions?
Just to, to renote, one of the critical points of this is the fact that we've had these water endpoints now are not serviceable anymore because radios and other elements on them are unavailable. And then secondarily, the original agreement that we got into with N P B D and Norris, when at the time it was the R E A, so Seward County R E A. That agreement, once Norris took over R E A, Norris gave notice and popped them, and moved themselves out and left N P B D and Seward together. And now N P B D has moved away and we'll move out of that and we'll be by ourselves with aged infrastructure and a system that essentially isn't compatible. I mean, we've had a twelve-year system now, approximately, correct? And so it's a pretty good lifespan on, on that sort of system. And so this will move us forward at a critical point when it had to happen, so.
Part of this structure, how we're getting this set up, is there is a, an interim agreement that the city is, is preparing to enter into with Aclara to keep the same system. We're not exactly sure. That date seems to shift when N P B D is pulling out. So plans are in place to have a one-year agreement with Aclara to maintain the existing system and allow for a transition to the new system. So there's, there's going to be a floating date that we're still working on, but we'll at least get that information to help make those decisions. The remaining item to discuss is the schedule, so upon approval tonight, the plan will be to advertise for bids in March and April with the bid opening towards the end of April. That will allow the city and us a few weeks to review those and, and ask quite a few questions with the goal of presenting to the city for award at one of the May meetings in twenty twenty.
Any other questions or comments from the council? Yes, Chris?
So Craig, we're, because it just happened where they shut up my house because apparently they weren't reading my water, so I was getting water free.
Oh.
So every endpoint in someone's house is going to get replaced? Is that what you're talking about?
Eventually. So right now, there are no replacement endpoints. So the goal, so the city is replacing them as needed. And so as the new ones are purchased, they can repurpose some of the others. The goal with the water meters would be to replace the first third within the next fiscal year. Now that location within the city hasn't been determined, but yes.
But, but it is every, every home?
It will be every home.
And it's going to be on the inside like it is today?
Yep. So that, the goal is to have it be similar to the way it is today. The arrangement and configuration will be similar between different providers, but it, there may be some variation. If it's, right now, most of the meters are provided on the Neptune platform, and so that's what's being utilized. If that's the same one, then maybe the change won't be as, as drastic as going to a completely different one. The interesting point about these endpoints is everybody makes an endpoint that works with everyone's meters, but it's read by their system. So that's kind of the marriage that's being proposed.
Well, I guess that was my question too, is, you know, having never been through this before, how do we, I mean, work with citizens? Is it a notification system?
Yep. We will either, if, if we do the install, then we will identify a program in which we will provide notification. With water, you have to set up times, like you have to go into their houses, you have to set up times, and so you just kind of work through it and then circle back with people. It's kind of a mess. Just being honest, think about it, like, when are people home? When are they available? It's going to take some time. If it is bid out and we see favorable numbers on the bid to have an install, these installers, the subcontractors, that's all they do. They're subcontractors and all they do is do installs, and they have their own built-in program with notifications and door hangers and all the other elements. They'll do photos and other stuff to provide us all the internal data. There's specific things that we'll want from them to make sure that they take a look at, while we're in there, you might as well look at the meter and check everything over because you're not going to get back in the home very often. And so same thing on electric, electric far easier, most of the time on the outside of the building, accessible at all times. Same thing though, if there's an efficiency we can find, we might have a contractor do it because we have lots of other projects, like a substation we build and all these other things we're working on. And if we see that same thing, public notification, they'll go out, they'll let people know, they'll have a route they're working. They'll also do the same thing. For safety purposes, when they take off the meter, we'll want them to look at the socket and everything else. And if we see something that's a concern, they take a photo of it, they mark it, they put the old meter back on. Then Jared comes out with their crew or we let, let the homeowner know if it's on their end, they identifying, get a whole electrician, we get it fixed up. Those are the process we'll work through, but we've been discussing that basically from day one because if a contractor does it, we want to make sure it's somebody experienced with a good reputation, with a good crew. And if we do it, we need to have a definitive plan, so.
Either way, the city will be involved, whether it's knowing where they're working in any given day or maybe they'll do surprise inspections or participate in inspections. So we have it set up both ways, but the specific details will be determined once it comes, the plan is in place.
Any other questions or comments from the council? Somebody in motion?
I'll make a motion to approve.
You have a motion for approval? Is there a second?
Second.
The motion in a second. Please register your votes. Please spread the votes.
I'm agreeing with B N S F Railway Company for improvements to Elm Street rail crossing. Greg?
Yes, B N S F plans to make improvements to the Elm Street Crossing and also the Highway thirty-four crossing down at the, near Pack and Save. And so with that, the thirty-four crossing is a state crossing, but the Elm Street Crossing is a city crossing only. And so to remain and keep that open, we have to help contribute on a portion of those repairs. This was a budgeted item that we had planned in there since last year's budget, and it came in right below budget. So we'd recommend approval because then this probably lets some green line get started to, to work on Highway thirty-four at some point this year and add another construction project to what's going on around here.
And just so you know, any, anytime we've had conversations with B N S F, they want to close that Elm Street Crossing. So it's someone kind of off to the side on the south side of there, so I think this would be a good opportunity by, by helping to have this improvement done to keep that open because they do things to businesses, you know, rely on that access on that end of it, so. Anyway, are there any questions or comments on item number three? Or is there a motion?
To approve the agreement with B N S F.
Is there a second?
Second.
There's a motion in a second. Please register your votes. Please spread the votes. Item four, human for professional construction engineering services with Shimmer Associates Incorporated for construction of the Waverly Road project. Greg?
Yes, as you know, we're getting started on the Waverly Road project. That, our portion of it is a bonded project. And so I think right about the end, I don't even remember if we did this, we knew you were leaving yet, or if we just said just to cross our fingers. But we put into the bond amount an additional approximately two hundred thousand in additional funds to help cover the cost of construction engineering and oversight and management on the project. Not knowing if we would have enough time with our city engineer or if potentially Jake would be gone and we hadn't filled the position. And so to cover ourselves, we did that in the bond. Ultimately, in conferring with Jake and looking at our outlook for hiring a city engineer and getting them on board, it was both of our recommendations that even if we have somebody on board, that there's just too much going on that they're going to be overseeing with East Seward, the rail campus, the turn lanes, and getting kind of their heads together about what's going on in the city. That this project's just too big, not to have all the details paid attention to with all of the elements and then the combination of, of the county portion of it that we're also helping out with. And so we went out and reached out to Shimmer, who was the engineering firm that designed Waverly Road improvements. And so they put this together and me and Jake reviewed it and made some edits and updates to kind of bring that number down a little bit and have a little bit more control on the hours that'll be out there, but easily fits within our, our budget amount for the bonding. And we'll keep moving this project forward so it's not delayed because we don't have somebody out there kind of keeping track of things. Again, so any questions you have?
Any questions on item number four?
How soon can we bond emails?
We signed off on, I think they'll go out for issuance like by the end of the month. So we signed off on the, the final reports to yesterday and sent those off, so.
Any questions or comments? Is there a motion?
Move to approve.
Second.
Motion in a second. Please register your votes. Please spread the votes. We have the city manager's report.
I can answer any questions you have. Obviously, golf committee working heavily, getting started. We had people out today. We moved the pins backed up to the greens. And so just gearing up for that new season is always a big thing, especially with the change in the liquor licensing. They moved everything upstairs, so it's all ready to go up in the clubhouse upstairs and so.
We're not changing the name?
Nope. Name remains the same. That was the, the will of our survey.
It was actually more than like, wow, I was around sixty.
Like sixty percent said, leave it the way it is.
There was some question about maybe doing a different design. We have kind of a, I don't know what you call it, a shield kind, well, I don't know, it's like a circuit, you've seen the design. But people were wanting maybe something more.
You know, something more artistic.
Something more artistic.
We're, we're off to a good start. Just got to get the liquor license finalized and then we'll get that element added to it. Adam here in the rec department is working with different vendors locally and boat and food trucks to work out, once we get started, to see if we can have some offerings both local and from outside and ship those around and see what the interest on that is. So we'll try to continue to keep people out at the, at the clubhouse on league nights, so.
And there'll be opportunities if, if we're leave, for example, they want to have some catered in. It just requires some planning and organization of, you know, like you have to sign up ahead of time so you know how much food to bring in. And, and I think that the space as well, we could potentially rent out if, if people were willing to have us provide the alcohol for the event because I think in the end, you know, because we're going to be the ones selling the alcohol, we directly benefit from any promotion, so if you have other activities going on out there before it was somebody else, because our rent was the same, you know, there's somebody else who would be benefiting from the added traffic this way. We're directly benefiting and can, I think, justify maybe doing more promotions and, and more discounts and other things just to get bodies out there because our sole revenue source isn't, it won't be the green fees, it would be the sale of alcohol, which in some cases, depending on the golfer, you, you might make more money off of the alcohol sale than you do the green fees, potentially. So any other, any questions or comments for Greg?
Closing out a number of downtown revitalization projects and then cleaned up and finished off. We will have funds left over. It was the recommendation by Trey, our administrator, to reopen those one time. He says by actually reopening the downtown revitalization funds for one other period to see if we can get qualifiers for projects that they can get in and get done quickly. That will look better on your application this summer versus the city doing a project. So we'll attempt to do that. If not, we'll default to the city doing sidewalk work. Is that, we know that will get done quickly. But we're going to open it back up based on Trey's recommendation to improve our standing for our next round of application this summer for award in the fall hopefully. So that will be going out hopefully tomorrow, and we'll do that in short order. It will be a very small window. And then that's kind of it, so.
How will you notify businesses that this window is open?
Through the chamber and then through our social media. That's how we'll do it, so.
What amount is left over?
We'll have approximately, I think, seventy total. Yep. So just different projects kind of skimmed themselves down because they just couldn't get, we had a major contractor in town that had an issue that they couldn't get around projects, and so the projects kind of took longer. But most of them are wrapped up. I think ninety percent of them are complete now, so. But we have one, one or two big ones that just couldn't get them stretched out, so. And we want to use up the funds.
It's hard to ask for more money if you don't use up all the money.
And we're also looking for project, and the projects we're looking for, and we'll stress this, are projects to be complete quickly. It can't be something that's going to take you six months to get done. It will have to be like, you got your contractors on board, they're ready to go this summer.
What about, is there any remaining sidewalk space that we need to fix while we're borrowing those extra funds?
The recommendation by Trey was to open this up first and see if we can spend the funds, and then if we can't, we'll do the sidewalks. But he said it looks better on your application to say you gave out all the money to businesses for commercial rehab rather than sidewalks done by the city, so. That'll be the last one. Yeah, and then we're gonna, you'll probably start seeing, Suzanne continues to roll out, so you're seeing more social media stuff. We were putting out notices on all the construction projects that started, so Highway fifteen, closure here soon down to One Lane. If they haven't already today, I don't think they did today. The sixteenth now? So the sixteenth down there, they'll begin work on the highway, or the Waverly Road Bridge. Are they out there today?
They were out there yesterday.
So Jessica, you have to go to her out, sorry.
What's on Hillcrest? West Hillcrest? What's that project?
Hillcr, west, west Hillcrest or east Hillcrest?
Bridge.
West.
West Hillcrest would be Bluff Road. That's a county project, a bridge over the Big Blue River. So that's, that's a county project.
The big bypass.
And then obviously, our, our crews are going around right now with the weather being the way it is and starting to do repair work again. Crack ceiling and some of that maintenance while the weather's nice. And then they'll get out and pick up all the gravel once we know if snow's not in the forecast anymore for sure, so.
You going to post that on social media when you're rolling out so we get vehicles off the street so we get the break?
Yeah, we can let them know. I'll check in with Bob Myers and let him know because there's a river of gravel, Michael's stack. It just rolls down the hill. So we'll do that, and then as you're aware with what's going on at the national level, we've started to continue and we'll look to be coordinating with Royal Healthcare and Four Corners Health just to start putting out information out there to remind people as this gets started where good resources are for information. Valid information coming from the state health department, Four Corners Health, CDC. And so we'll start that process as well of helping continue to get that out there, so. But get ahead of that and make sure with us being a critical service with electric and water and stuff like that, we'll, we'll have a plan, so.
There you go. Any other questions for Greg?
So accept his report?
Second. Motion in a second. Please register your votes. Please spread the votes. Future requests for council agenda items or administrative action? None? Do we have upcoming events?
No.
Okay. There's nothing coming up.
Zero.
What?
Fourth of July.
Fourth of July will be, once again, on the fourth of July.
I have one other random one, sorry. Uh, we did just finish, uh, the last element of Armory Park. As you know, we're installing the Blackhawk helicopter and that will be done, I believe, by the end of, um, April.
Speaking of the Fourth of July, it'll be there by the Fourth of July.
Yes, um, and there's a lot of events going on out there this spring. But we finalized and received funding from the Seward Foundation for approximately ten thousand dollars to finish the park. They didn't want to contribute to the helicopter, they wanted to do the other element because we have room to put other stuff. And so, uh, with, uh, advice from Jerry, we went through and looked again and we found an ADA compliant, um, Army Jeep playground system. So it's smaller, but it almost looks like it's like in quicksand, like it's sunk. And so, but it's really cool. It will be in, uh, National Guard colors, um, Nebraska National Guard. And then we'll decal it as well, uh, and then it will have the poured in rubber matting. And so the entire park will be done now by, by the end of April.
What happened to the one we looked at a month or so ago? What, what was, that was a helicopter, wasn't it?
That's coming, we have, we have another, yeah, the Blackhawks coming.
Okay.
We have a section of that, if you went down there right now and you saw where the concrete's poured, that's what's going to hold the rubber matting. There's a green space that's just blank and we wanted to put either a swing set or something else. Really wanted to do something ADA compliant and, and really make this an ADA park. And so, uh, we found out we didn't have enough fall radius for any sort of swing system or an ADA swing. And so then we just started flipping through the book and then I found a Jeep and took it over to Jerry and he went, yep, that's it right there. So we ordered it.
They'll make sure all the decals are right.
Yes.
One thing they do want to make sure is.
He sends me the actual official National Guards schematics.
Right, yeah.
So.
That's a great.
That, that's a good one. And then there'll be an official unveiling and obviously Seward Foundation Rotary and some other have contributed to that, so we'll make sure we recognize them as well. Sorry, that was a big one.
We know how much you get excited about swing sets and playground equipment, so.
It's a big deal.
All right, with that, is there a motion to adjourn?
Second.
Motion in a second, please register your votes, please play the votes.